Welcome, School Committee and Town Council, Town Staff. Tonight is the Town Council School Committee Budget Work Session. This is the fourth work session. The date is Wednesday, March 13th, and the time is 7:08. And if we could please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I just want to make a few opening remarks. School Committee member Elizabeth Morris is at a Special Ed Local Advisory Committee meeting tonight, so she will not be with us, or maybe she'll be here later. And also, Counselor Paul Donley has injured his back, so he will not be here tonight. So, our thoughts are to him, hope he feels better. And at this time, we're just going to ask Mr. Alfred if he has any opening remarks before we turn it over to Dr. Kristen Stringfellow.
No, I think we can start with the superintendent's presentation. The only change that I have recommended, and I understand the school committee agreed to last night, was a reduction of $200,000 from one line item, and that was associated with what the cost of health care would be for the 2013-14 year. So, at this point, the request for funding is in balance with the manager's budget, and subject to the reviews tonight, determine whether it's going to be in accord with the council's program. So, with that, I turn it over to Kristen.
And if we can just make sure that everybody's mic is turned on, that would be great. Just give them a little tap. Okay? Dr. Stringfellow.
Thank you. It's our pleasure to be here this evening to go through the next phase of the budget process with you all. Last evening, we had a school committee meeting, and so these, the PowerPoints that I'm going to share with you today have all already been reviewed by the school committee, and they're eager to have a conversation with you about gaining your support of our budget. The first page that I have for you is a review of information that we presented to you earlier, which is the universal chart of accounts data on per pupil expenditure. South Kingstown per pupil expenditure is at $17,377. We are the 12th highest LEA in Rhode Island, and LEA is local educational agency. We are above the state average, but there are reasons that we're above the state average. It's not just one or two features of the budget, and it certainly has been a longstanding, it's been a longstanding practice to be higher than the state average in our community. It is because of staffing, which impacts caseloads and class size, the number of buildings that we have, post-employee benefits, economies of scale, contractual obligations with each of our three bargaining units, levels of student activities that we offer in our town, programs and courses, class size and caseloads. And so, I want you to keep that in mind, if you will, as we move forward. Our special education per pupil expenditure is approximately $72,038. We're the eighth highest LEA in Rhode Island, as the Rhode Island average to educate special education students is about $50,000. This is a review for your-
If we could just wait, Carol has a question.
I know you're saying, "local educational agency," and I mean, I'm just not familiar-
That means district.
What?
That means district.
Okay, but 12th highest, does that mean we spend the most, the 12th highest in spending?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying? And eighth highest in special ed?
Spending for special education students.
Okay, I just didn't know what that meant.
I'm sorry. Yep, and "local education agency" is the term used in Rhode Island for "district."
Okay, thank you, sure.
This is also a review slide. It's not new to you, but it's, I think, worthy of having up here as a review this evening. UCOA spending is available to you on the Rhode Island Department of Education website, and sometimes it can be a little tricky to figure out because it is set up into different funding areas by location. But what I've done is organized it for you in a table to show you the areas where we are spending above the state average. And so, I'm not going to go through it, I'm certain that, you know, you can read it, I can highlight areas for you later. But it's important when we're referencing the reductions that we've made, in what areas it made sense to make those reductions. These are the areas where we were spending below the state average. Again, this is the same slide that was shown to you in December of this year, just here as a reminder of the areas where, for one reason or another, we're not spending as much as the rest of the state is. Anybody still okay? Okay. All right. You sure?
No, it's me.
In terms of revenue assumptions-
Is this for the 2010-11 year?
I think this is for the 2011-12 year. 2010-11, 2010-11 year.
Kristen, Maggie's going to ask that question now.
Okay, and it's only because I, I'm not totally familiar with this, so I appreciate your understanding.
Absolutely welcome to ask. Yep. What page are we on?
Charters.
Yep.
The second page. Excuse me, the SKPPE, we have 170% above, I guess, what the average is. Can you just explain why that is?
Certainly.
So, I can certainly, I just want to understand.
Absolutely. Thank you for asking that question. I'm sure if you have the question, others have the question. So, in our community, we have the unique circumstance where we have charter schools that are in South Kingstown. And so, there is a higher probability that youngsters would be leaving their neighborhood schools to go to a charter school in their community. It's unusual to have two charter schools in a high-performing suburban community, and therefore, when Mr. Rashad and I have met with Steve Nardelli of the Charter School Network, there are urban districts that don't have the percentage of charter schools that we have in our community, and I think that's why we have an unusually high number. Certainly.
Kristen, with us being over, you know, with ESY, out-of-district placements, even though it's only 1%, is there any rationalization with getting gaps closed? I mean, can we rationalize being over with getting gaps closed for kids?
So, you can rationalize, we can rationalize anything we'd like. So, there's certainly a lot of qualitative information that we have to add to this statistical or quantitative measure. And so, if you're saying that we spend more for ESY services, we could certainly make the argument, when we compare how we're doing with our special education youngsters, that that money is well-spent. And we could certainly say that we offer more extended services to youngsters than other districts do, and I believe we would be accurate. The curious piece about ESY in and of itself is while we are showing that our kneecap data is increasing, we have, for many years, invested heavily in ESY and not been able to close the gap between, as you know, how special education youngsters are performing and how regular education youngsters are performing. So, that also becomes curious in the area of caseloads. Several school committee meetings ago, the school committee asked me to gather data on class size and on caseloads of special education teachers, and I presented that data in large detail. I'm sorry, there's a noise. And so, we have very small caseloads for special education teachers compared to neighboring districts. And then, that would beg the question that we're investing in this, and therefore, we should be closing gaps. And in some cases, that is the case. We certainly are doing a good job exiting youngsters with proficiency from special education, as our special education rates have gone down, but there's not necessarily a direct correlation with investment and achievement.
Right, this ESY special education really surprises me, because what I've heard from the parents is, over the, I'd say probably, two or three years now, there's been cutbacks on the ESY services.
You are correct that there have been a lot of changes to the ESY services. I would say that we are certain that IEP-driven needs are being met during the program that we're offering now, especially this summer. In consultation with some of the ESY teachers, their reaction was that this summer, they're really honing in on the student achievement pieces, and that's been wonderful. But there are less youngsters who are eligible for ESY, there are less youngsters in our community that are eligible for special education services as well. And so, that actually came up from a CILLAC parent, and Teresa Egan was able to sit down with them and sort of map out why the changes were made, why they're in the best interest of children as a whole, and certainly, when individual parents ask the question, then we're directing them to their child's IEP and walking through it to make certain that they either are or are not eligible for ESY services. One of the factors of the contract that was recently negotiated with the teachers was ESY, and the reduction that was made in ESY was a staff-only reduction in terms of their non-student time. So, it's important to note that while there was a reduction in the budget for ESY for this upcoming budget year, that has no impact on the time with students. That time has not been changed. There was extra time being put in for planning and grading and whatnot, and so, and that piece has been eliminated.
So, just a tie loose ends up here. Could you just elaborate on how it's more addressing the needs of the children?
I can say that my first summer here, there were programs that were more field trip-based, more life skills-based, not necessarily focused in on the exact elements of the IEP that would say, "This is the way that we need this student to be able to calculate more effectively. This is the reading level that we're expecting that the student be on." And it was more of an experiential experience instead of an academic experience. That's been my sense.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to go into a little more detail than I planned on this, UCOA spending above and below, but not extraordinary detail. So, when you look at pieces like transportation, it's logical that we spend more than other districts on transportation, because our land mass is bigger, and we have the Wardens Pond area, and so, that's going to take a lot of buses and planning and routes. And our youngsters are not right next door to each other, in a city they would be, where we can pick up multiple youngsters at one stop. So, there is a lot of background behind each of these pieces. When you look at retiree benefits, we provide health care to some of our teachers in retirement. Some other districts certainly provide more. They might provide a health care-for-life option, and some other districts might provide none. So, there's always some sort of a background for these. Nurses, we've made a commitment in our community, we have medically fragile youngsters, and parents have come forward and have really valued the fact that we have a nurse in every school. That's a choice, and it's a choice that we believe has merit because of safety factors. But not every district does that. And so, those are a few examples of why we might be spending more. You can't look at this data and just say, "Because we spend more, we should spend less." There's a lot more information within. The opposite could be said in terms of spending below, and so, you're taking a look at substitute teachers. Although I feel as if we certainly have provided professional development, when we're writing new curriculum and we have substitutes in place, parents' perception may be that we have lots of substitutes in place, when in fact, you look at this data, and we have less substitutes that are being employed in our community than in the state average. In terms of technology, that's something that the council was very interested in hearing about during our Capitol meeting. We talked a little bit about technology, and so, from our perspective, we're doing well in terms of technology. When you take a look at the UCOA spending, we're much lower than the state average in this area, and so, that causes us to think, "Well, why is that? Are we just spending more efficiently?" It doesn't say, you know, what grade or number of computers that other folks have, it just merely denotes a dollar amount. Thank you. This is the revenue assumption slide, and it's only changed slightly since the last time we met, and so, I've tried to capture the changes for you in blue. This is the third year of the Funding Formula, and we are making projections on state aid that become more fine-tuned the closer we get to the governor's budget being ready. We know that we're going to receive a reduction in funding formula. We have an estimated amount. We know that we have student enrollment decline. Again, we have an estimated amount. We know that the Jobs Fund is now estimated to be included, and we know that group home aid is estimated to be included. We are a community that has group homes, not every community is housing group homes. And what I've written in blue for you is that the, there has been a change in the number of beds. It has been reduced at the lighthouse group home, but very, very small number of beds being reduced. That's a change. In terms of undesignated funds, we have utilized 25% of our fund balance to be applied as revenue. We've had a discussion at this table already about Medicaid funds, and that we have had, in some years, as much as $800,000 worth of Medicaid reimbursement, and that number continues to diminish. And now, we are projecting $550,000, and going forward, we expect that that reimbursement could be even less. At one point, when the school committee approved their budget, we were anticipating that in order to balance our budget, we would need to request, in local revenue, a 2% property tax transfer assumption. And as the manager stated at the onset of the meeting, as health care experience has become more clear, just as it is in every year, those numbers are, they're tighter, and we're better able to project how tight we can go. The manager is recommending a $200,000 reduction in that one-line item, which will move the estimated tax transfer to about 1.59% from our calculations. In terms of expenditures, we have two contracts that are not in negotiations. So, as you know, our teacher contract ratified on January 13th, and the salary increases for this budget would be steps only, and it stipend to top step only, and there is no plan for a, you know, an increase across the board. Co-pay steps at one, teachers one through three are at 15%, and at steps four through six are at 17%. Steps seven through eight are at 18%, and top step teachers, which are a majority of our teachers, are at 20%. Our other bargaining unit that's not in negotiations is Council 94, which represents our custodial and maintenance staff. They have had a wage freeze for three years, and their co-pay is set at 15%. The bargaining unit that we are currently in negotiations with or about to embark on negotiations is the SKESP, which is the Educational Support Professionals, and they have had a wage freeze for two years. Their contract is a wage freeze for three years, but they have reopened their contract in year three, and their co-pay sits right now at 15%. We expect a $250,000 turnover allowance, which means that we build our budget in anticipation that we will achieve $250,000 worth of savings in retirements and leaves. And that's getting more tricky every year with the changes to the pension requirements. Our school committee, at the same school committee meeting where we were asked to take a look at class sizes and caseloads, we were also asked to take a look at the projection of about how many people would be retiring, and how many people have been retiring, and if that number is increasing or decreasing. And what we found is that although we feel comfortable with the $250,000 this year, because we still have leaves, and when someone's on leave, if they take a personal leave for a year or a professional leave for a year, then we are not paying a top-step teacher, presumably, in bringing in a lower-step teacher to take their place. There are savings that are captured within. But we are projecting going forward that we're not going to be able to realize the savings in retirement that we were able to realize earlier, because less people are retiring. We're anticipating insurance increase by 5%, and although we originally anticipated that the health care increase to the working rate would be 3%, this is the area in blue, as noted, where the manager is comfortable with the experience thus far, where he can make the recommendation that the school committee has agreed to, which is a $200,000 adjustment. We are anticipating tuition increases by 5% in all of our outside tuitions, and these would be for special education placements outside of our district, Charahoe Career and Technical Center, and for charter schools. And the Capitol Plan, we've already had our meeting, so we present it to you as submitted.
Dr. Stringfellow, could you tell me what the number is that attends Charahoe? Please?
I think we have 14, Anna.
14?
14, thank you.
In order to balance our budget, we needed to take a look at about $1.685 million worth of staffing reductions. And so, this slide, I'm sorry, Steve, you need to advance me one slide. Thank you. So, this slide shows you the areas that the staffing reductions would be coming from, and they represent all four personnel areas in our educational community. So, they're coming out of administration, the teaching staff, and support staff, in custodians and in support professionals. And so, I can go through them line by line, or I can probably take one line and try to explain it to you.
I think that would be good. And the first line is central office administration?
Correct.
Thank you.
So, the first line is central-
Dr. Stringfellow, Carol has a question.
Kristen, I just want to say, you know, we're not familiar with all your terms, so when you do the three letters, or you, like I said, "Send Off Admin," I don't even know what that was until Ella just told me what it was. So, you know, you guys are used to seeing this all the time.
I apologize for the acronyms.
We use these short terms to try and figure out, what does that mean? I said, "Is that percent?" Or what is that?
Please feel free to ask, because I do realize we have a community-
A code, you have a code.
Yes, we do have an educational jargon code, and so, we have a community member that is wonderful about, you know, letting us know that this is educational jargon, and so, we do forget, so I apologize.
That's okay, you don't have to apologize. I just want to slow you down, so I know what you're talking about, when you use the shorthand.
Sure. So, we have made a commitment to reduce a central office administrative position, and the reduction in salary and benefits that we estimate will be about $120,000. And this is an area in UCOA that we are spending below the state average, and that's why it says "below." In some areas, it might say "non-applicable," because it's not in either the "below" or "above" chart, so we seem to be right about the same as the state average. And then, I've given on the right a rationale as to why that position could be eliminated this year. The second area is contractual services, and it's in the amount of $11,000. Special education, we know that we have taken a really deep look at caseloads, and we know that there are many students who have been exited from special education, and that we've made a commitment to co-teaching models throughout the district, and so that we know that that is the dollar amount of savings that we can save in special education staffing. We don't know exactly which teacher, but we have provided a layoff notification to 78 teachers in our district in accordance with our personnel assignment team agreed upon policy, excuse me, agreed upon procedures. And the IEPs have not been completed yet, so we can't say for great certainty that it will be exactly at this grade level or in this building. The displacement lists follow the layoff lists and are typically done in the beginning of May, and so, certainly, we would have more clarity at that time.
Kristen, can I just backtrack a little? Contractual services, could you give some examples?
Yep, and this is student assistance counselor time.
And we talked about that the other day. They'll be eliminated from Broad Rock Middle School, but will remain everywhere else in the school district?
Correct.
Thank you. Contractual services will be student assistance counselors, they will no longer be at Broad Rock Middle School. And central office administration, is that one position, two positions?
One position.
One position. And is-
Person has not been notified yet, so in terms of a personnel requirement, it's nothing I could bring specifically to your attention at this time.
Thank you.
Sure. So, the rest of the chart follows similarly, and I think a really good example are probably the elementary sections and the high school sections to be able to articulate for you. And so, it looks, as you know, what happens, well, as I believe you know, what happens when I'm doing elementary predictions is something called a cohort survival method. You age everybody up, so third graders become fourth graders, second graders become third graders. You pull out the youngsters who are at that school based upon a parental wish that can be granted, certainly, if we have availability, that's a benefit that we're able to offer families. And then, we take a look at anything significant that might be happening in that student enrollment area, like there might be a plan for a housing development, or there might have been some sort of significant action in that area. You know, a really good example that's not in our community is when the Davies Center, the Davisville Quonset area started to close down. That has significant impact, right? We're not dealing with anything like that here in terms of enrollment. So, ours are pretty stable, pretty steady. We start in February monitoring elementary attendance every week, and so, if there's a change in elementary school attendance, the school secretaries will send that information up to our office, and we start to hone in closer and closer on what we're predicting. So, this shows that in at least one section, we're certain that we have enough of a buffer at this time of year that we can drop a section at elementary. And that's not as clear at the high school level. At the high school level, upon examination of class sizes, we're sure that we can render $250,000 worth of savings in high school staffing. But we don't know particularly which department or which teacher until after the students select their courses. They'll do that in April, and then it will become more clear. But it doesn't matter what courses they take, the bottom line doesn't change, it's just the who, where, and how much. One of the contractual provisions is that department chair agreed to teach another section, and so, when they did that, the very good news for our students and families is that department chairs are typically your very finest teacher in that department, someone who's really got a good command of the instructional process. So, the good news is they will be back more into the classroom. And the offset, and could be a good news financially, is that we will accrue savings of .2% of, .2 of a teacher in every department, and so, that piece is known. Every department that has a department chair who's teaching in that certification area is going to be reduced by .2. Beyond that, it will be where students are not signing up for courses. And so, again, after students choose courses, then we have already provided layoff notices in each department area, so that we can be ready to determine where the displacement letters need to go.
Kristen, when the high school department heads pick up the extra class, is that additional pay for them?
No.
No. And the elementary-
They're paid by the number of teachers that they're supervising in their department.
I'm sorry, Kay, I'm just going to finish. The elementary section, this isn't going to create any redistricting of any children to other elementary schools? Thank you. Carol?
I just want to know how many, the $250,000 in the- I just want to know how many, the 250,000 in the high school, how many teachers does that allow for?
We really, I can't give you a specific answer to that because there's a difference between how many people and how many FTEs. And so, for example, I don't know how many people it will affect, but in its most broad sense, you take the number and you divide approximately by 75,000, and then you can get a sense of about how many positions that is. But again, it could be .2 in one department, .4 in another department, nothing in another department, or it could be two FTEs in one department. I won't know that yet. But I know that I can achieve that savings based on the class size data.
And in the elementary, when you say drop a section, does that mean?
An example?
Yeah, please.
So every year at Broad Rock in fifth grade, we vacillate between needing 10 sections and 11 sections. 10, 11, 10, 11. And so that could be an area that this year might not have enough enrollment. I'm watching that one very, very specifically. It could be a kindergarten that last year had an unusual ripple. And they needed three kindergartens when historically they've always needed two. Now, next year, at the kindergarten enrollments that we're projecting through child outreach, it looks like they're going to need two again.
And could you just further elaborate on the specialist itinerants?
Yep.
Is it cuts in music, art?
There aren't any cuts to programs that we're anticipating. And we hope that you are, I'm going to put my little advertisement in, we're hoping that you support our budget so that we wouldn't need to go back and cut any programs. But we're not anticipating cuts to programs. What this would look like is in areas, if you go back into the UCOA and take a look at the areas that we spend higher than the state average, this is taking a look at, okay, what do the national caseloads look like for speech-language therapists or guidance counselors? And you know, every time I'm giving an example, people are sort of like, is it me? I'm giving general examples. So when you're looking at elementary reduction, if last year we reduced at a school one or two elementary sections due to enrollment, kids are registering, there are less kids registering. Sometimes it doesn't impact the phys ed teacher in that school, or the music teacher in that school, because it doesn't make sense to reduce somebody from a .75 to a .7 and make them drive to another school, which ends up costing the district more. Doesn't have a good impact on education, certainly doesn't have a good impact on that staff member, and it's not really cost-effective. But then all of a sudden, sometimes there's enough of a reduction in cumulative number of years that we can have an impact. Certainly, this year, if there are reductions in folks at the high school or in special education, there will be a trickle-down effect in other areas because those folks won't be without a position. They might, I'm going to use the word bump, even though bump doesn't exist in our contract, they might bump someone who has an itinerant or a specialist position. So it might not be the English teacher that's reduced. We're dropping an English section, and they may have certification in art. And so now they become an art teacher.
There's only two that you haven't covered in the list, so you might as well. Custodians and teacher assistants and clerks.
Sure. So custodians, this is late evening coverage. It's in elementary schools. And it really is not, again, it's a percentage of folks. That when we sat down with the leadership team and said, is there any availability? Is there anywhere that we can get more efficient without losing our effectiveness? They brought up that an area that they could offer is late evening coverage at the elementary level. And so that's an area that's more known to us. In terms of teacher assistant and clerks, when you have lower student enrollment and you have lower special education student enrollment, and you're affecting either departments or areas, then there will be a complementary reduction also in that support staff. In addition, we're doing a really good job of involving youngsters more in the regular education program. And we're finding that that's having an impact on the amount of support that students are needing district-wide with either a one-to-one teacher assistant or teacher assistants in various areas throughout the school. And so that number you're seeing would affect teacher assistants and clerks.
And if I could just close. With these reductions for, what is it, 1.?
1.685.
1.685. Will you be collecting data to, you know, keep track of student achievement with these cuts?
Certainly.
Thank you. Any questions here at the table before we go on to the next page? Back to you.
Thank you. This is really my last page. And so this sort of shows the flow of the budget process in our time with you. As of January and February, it was really a superintendent's budget, and my recommendation was $58,825,500. On February 12th, the school committee adopted with full support, there were six members in attendance who voted and one member in attendance who sent along, couldn't vote, they weren't in attendance, but sent along support for the budget in the amount of $58,825,500, which was the same as I recommended. It does include a $1.685 million reduction in staffing. That was a choice. When there's a difference between revenue and expenditures, you need to come up with a 1.685 somewhere. And we were able to do it through staffing. It's a hard choice. It always is a hard choice when you're making that kind of a decision. We are already starting to receive some retirements and resignations. Certainly, you know, we don't want to, when you see the names of the people who are retiring, it breaks your heart because you can't imagine ever replacing them. But I'm sure that for someone who's been on the layoff list, it's comforting to know that there might be room for them. There are other areas that the school committee certainly could have gone to. It would be a list that would be familiar to me. It's an ugly list. You've heard the same list for the last couple of years. It's a list that I am proud to say we were able to not delve into. And it would give me great pleasure to, during my entire tenure here, never have to delve into that list, as I'm sure it would give you joy to do the same. On February 14th, which is Valentine's Day, that always sort of tickles my innards, as my grandmother would say. February, you know, Valentine's Day is the day the town manager receives my greatest gift, the present of our budget. So it became the town manager's budget, and he gave me a kit get in symbolization of that historic event. In the town manager's budget, as the manager alluded to earlier, he has incorporated the school committee's request for funding with that $200,000 reduction in the healthcare line item. And so you're being presented with that as a manager's budget tonight. So today, which is the last part of our slide, is March 13th. It's a budget discussion between the school committee and the town council. Our goal is, it's an opportunity for you folks to dialogue and talk about the reasoning, the rationale that this budget is worthy of your endorsement and support. And having said that, I will leave you to that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm going to see if there's any questions here at the table. Jim?
Kristen, a couple of questions. Can you give me what the step increases, dollar amount will be? Who's left here? What that number is? It's not in your line items here, I can't pull it out.
So if you're saying, what's the difference between what a step one teacher makes and what a step two teacher makes?
Just you're grouping who's left in step one through nine. What's that total cost and what's the increase this year?
John knows that.
About $250,000. I don't have the exact number, but it runs about 250.
Okay. And Kristen, the last time I had written down, just give me the new numbers going forward. The last time I had 12 positions, grade one through three, 21, four through six, 25 and seven through nine, and 294, 10 and above. What are those numbers going forward for the budget year that we're talking about?
So what you're saying is, how many teachers we have in grades one through three? You have 12?
Well, the last numbers I got from you, one month or two months ago, you said there were 12 of them in grades one through three, 21, four through six, 25, seven through nine, and 294 and 10 above.
And when did we send that to you? Approximately?
I think I heard that verbally, but anyway.
About a month ago?
Yeah, but what are the numbers going forward? Just tell me what your numbers are in this budget, in those categories.
We're looking to reduce approximately 30 positions in all four areas. Administration, teacher, teacher support, I mean, excuse me, educational support and custodial. And so I don't have a breakdown for you exactly due to FTEs and number of people.
Okay, but the custodials are not in the certified, are they?
No.
No. All right, so the 30 in the teaching categories are aides, clerks?
So I don't have that information for you, and I won't have that information until June.
All right, because all I'm looking, you know, the one statement you passed out here, you said SK Public Schools, collective bargaining, fiscal impact statement, certified staff. So I'm looking at this page you sent to us for certified staff, where you have the $1,685,000 of first-year reductions. So when it says up top here, certified staff, I'm just trying to find out how many certified staff people.
Could you just tell the page, Jim?
The page that you're referencing. If you could hold it up and show me which one you're talking about, I can be more clear.
The fiscal impact statement.
Pardon?
The fiscal impact statement.
Yes, I said that fiscal impact statement.
She doesn't, no.
We didn't hear you.
Thank you.
You didn't receive this from me tonight.
Prior meetings, yeah. Oh, no, not tonight, prior meetings. You gave us the fiscal impact statement.
Okay, the fiscal impact statement is not what we're talking about tonight. The fiscal impact statement is disclosing to the public the impact of the collective bargaining agreement that was agreed to.
Okay, so this then is not quite correct then, because there are not 30 certified folks that are going to be retired or not hired back here. Are there going to be others in there like custodians, so on and so forth? That's all I'm trying to get straight here.
Where, Jim, in this fiscal impact statement, where are you seeing 30? Are you taking the 30 from what we were talking about with the budget discussion?
You just simply told me a minute ago, 30. I don't have 30 from this. You told me 30.
Okay, because we're talking about two different things. I'm talking about the budget. You're talking about something that occurred several months ago in terms of the contract.
That's all I'm trying to find out.
Yep.
For your NEA certified staff, how many of those folks have been eliminated?
So when you're looking at the first piece lump sum salary increase of step 10 only, are you asking me how many people are at step 10?
Nope.
Okay, I'm sorry then, what are you asking me?
I'm just asking you how many folks between the first step and through 10th, how many folks? Let's put it another way, how many of those people are in the $1,685,000 first-year reductions?
Jim, can I just ask a question, maybe to clarify, to help Kristen? You're looking for how many certified teachers? When she said 30 positions will be eliminated, she means teacher assistance, custodial, administration, and teachers? What I think you're looking for is how many teachers are in part of that 30? Is that what you're looking for?
What we got was certified staff, NEA with the $1,685,000 on it.
Okay, so certified staff, I think, is teachers.
Obviously, it's not custodians.
Right.
It's teacher group.
Teachers.
So that's all I'm trying to-
I wonder.
Teachers.
I don't, until we go through the layoff process and specific people are identified as not being retained, it's impossible, we know what the dollar amount is because we've had to identify that in the budget. But since everybody's salary is different, you don't know how many exact positions there are within that dollar amount.
Okay, I have no problem with that. The point is, it's not just certified, it's including non-certified.
Right.
Well, okay, this happens to say NEA certified. So that's all I'm trying to get straight. Includes everyone. Custodials all the way through. Jonathan, just let me hold on here a second, I'm just trying to get some numbers straight here. So what I'm trying to find out is how many certified people do you have in this budget? Okay, and can that be broken down between one through threes, four, six, seven, nine, and 10?
No, it would be based on titles, Jim, so it would be classroom teachers, 281.3, therapists, 14.4, and so forth.
Yeah, okay. All right, yeah.
I think that maybe in terms of clarifying, on the sheet that you're referring, that was a fiscal impact statement on the certified staff within the NEA contract. It didn't deal with the budget itself because it was dealing solely with those folks that were certified.
No problem. I have no problem with that. I keep repeating, this is certified staff, NEA. I'm just trying to come up with a number.
So effectively, if you look at the 1213 budget to the 1314 year-
Yeah.
-on certified staff, you're going from 341.1 to 324.1, a difference of 17. Now, again, I think the most important thing here is that you're not talking, you're talking about full-time equivalents rather than actual people. So you may have two people that leave the services of the school department, yet only one FTE that really is removed.
All right. Okay, second question, just looking again at this fiscal impact statement, you had the stipend for the year going forward of $498,000. You said a lump sum salary increase of $1,587 per. If my math is correct, Alan, that comes to 314 people. So, you know, what's 10 folks here or there? But am I wrong on that?
The 498 divided by 15?
$1,587, which was on the impact statement.
Does that include step increases too, John? In the 498, 410?
No.
No? Okay. Okay, they would have been in the original budget.
Yep, they would have been required by law anyway.
Have any idea what the funding formula is costing this year?
How much we're losing in the funding formula?
Did you say, Jim, how much we're losing in the funding formula?
Yes.
Yes.
About 380,000.
300 what?
80.
Is that eight or 80?
80.
80.
80, 380,000.
Let me correct that. The actual loss on the funding formula is closer to 300,000. There's a loss of 60,000 on the group home aid. And there are changes in the, part of district tuitions is up, and the contributions for high-cost special education is about level. So you've got a difference there, but if you look just at the formula itself, it's around, it's going to be around 300,000. The reason I say around is that because they will not calculate the actual amounts until April 15th, I believe, is when they'll have the, they'll use the actual enrollments as of that date. The calcs that the governor's budget used were calcs using the existing membership as of last year. So if we were to lose 20 students, we would see somewhat of a reduction. But those reductions, Jim, will not be material because when you look at the funding formula, and I mentioned this to you the other day, is that the core instruction amount is at 8897 for the 1314 year.
Right.
We're only getting on a state share ratio, 17.5% of that. So you're down to whatever that number is, 1,500, 1,600. The way the formula is set up, you're looking at the difference between what you got last year and what you're entitled to under the formula. That distance is about 2.4 million dollars. Then you divide that by eight, because there's eight years left. And that's how you come up with the 300,000. So you got the 300 there, you got the loss of beds for the group home, and you've got, I think it was about a $10,000 increase on the outside transportation values. And that's how that nets out. According to the governor's budget, to the Department of Education's budget, to- According to the governor's budget, to the Department of Education's budget, to our own calculations, we're all within about $25,000.
Okay, alright, but feeding in on this education funding formula, looking under the state aid here, the approved budget for the current year was $7,711,000. For the 2014 budget, we're looking at $7,758,000, call it another, call it up $50,000. So where does this, how does this 300,000 fit into that?
They're taking the amount of money that you received in the current year that was associated directly with the funding formula, and they're looking at the difference of what that number was and what the number you're entitled to next year is. We're entitled under the formula, even though we're receiving the 7.7 million, we're entitled under the formula, if there was, if there was no phase in, to about $5.7 million next year. But since we had over eight million, it was about eight million one that we had in the current year that was just formula-driven, then you take the difference between those two numbers, the 5.7 and the eight million one, as I said before, it's about 2.4 million. When you divide that by the eight remaining years, it says you're going to have $300,000 that you would have to cut out each year for the next eight years. When we started this two years ago with the formula, it was at 370, then it went down to 342, and it's now down at 300. So that's based on a number of factors, it's based on them, one, increasing the core amount, it also is a change in proportionality. We're getting seventeen point five percent this year, where last year we got 16.8.
Okay, I certainly appreciate that. All I'm trying to find out is why our state aid number is up $50,000 from this current year budget to the fourteen budget. Under your revenue statement, state aid, that's all I'm trying to figure out, why is it up when we're all looking at losing 300,000?
The, the, when you look at the revenue statement, Jim, you'll see that the adopted 2012-13 year was 8,513,652, okay? The proposed 2013-14 year is 8,131,000 or about $400,000 less. A portion of that is the 300,000, a portion of that is the $60,000 associated with the group homes.
I mean, I'm looking at this approved budget 2013 of $7,711,000, but where do you come up with that eight million figure?
What budget do you have, Jim?
One, right, the South Kingston School, our school committee budget 2014.
It includes the group home aid, includes the group home aid and the federal jobs fund. If you take those three and add them up, it comes up to the number that Steve was referencing.
But it has a separate line for group home aid of 375,000, it's, it's in there, it's a separate line item.
Can I just say, I just, I just want to interrupt for one second, Jim. Steve, in, in your budget statement, the transfer of the school fund, page N48, it's not the same as what we just got from the school, the school department budget, the numbers aren't exactly the same. And I think that's where we're.
Here's the difference. In my, in my budget, which you have.
Yes.
I'm giving you a total state and federal aid line item, which is inclusive of the state aid, the group home aid, and the federal aid, okay? In the school department's budget, what they have is they just list state aid, federal aid, state permanent fund, group home, and federal jobs program. Those, there's no subtotal there. If you took the subtotal, Jim, for the 2012-2013 year, that's where the 8,513,652 amount is. When we looked at the 13-14 year, again, because I'm giving a subtotal, you've got 8,131,786, because that 8,131,000 is the total of the 7,756, 786, plus what the school department showed at 375,000. My numbers adjusted downward the group home by the sixty, and adjusted upward the state aid by the sixty. So it netted to the same, it footed to the same number.
Okay, alright, alright, so that's, alright, so I see what you have done here. So your eight million five includes the group home aid and federal jobs fund, and the eight million one, just the 375,000 with that, alright. Let me see, just a couple more questions here. Going back to this fiscal impact statement, when I, you know, just looking here at the total increase-decrease, so we, you know, on the taxpayer's side here, it looks like But you said that savings will be offset by reductions in the funding formula, salary step increases. So if we're looking at 300,000 in the funding formula, 250,000 step increases, that's 550,000, alright, subtracting that from the 686,000, I come up with 135,000, but Steve has saved us 200,000 more, so we're 335,000 to the good on behalf of the taxpayers. I'm just trying to figure out how we need 2% from our property taxpayers of 900 some odd thousand, and are we really making up for the federal jobs loss and the state aid and putting it on the backs of South Kingston property taxpayers?
About five minutes ago, we had located the fiscal impact statement that we were talking about. Luckily, we had it with us because it wasn't a part of the, our anticipated discussion this evening, and now we have lost it. It can't be far, because I don't see it on the floor. So if you could in the interim ask your next question, we will get back to you on that one.
Okay, I mean, what I'm coming down to, it looks like, you know, we might have been able to have a wash for the budget this year rather than the 2%, 900 and, gosh, $68,000, whatever the number is. But it looks like there really could have been a wash here, looking at your, your impact statement. So I'm, I'm just really baffled, why we need the 900 some odd thousand.
Am I on? Can you hear me? So we have it, someone kindly passed it down, I'm appreciative of that. So, Jim, you, you're aware of what a fiscal impact statement is and how it came about, right? Do I, should you want me to review that, that part first, or you want me to just jump into your question?
I'd certainly rather not. All I know is salary and benefits are roughly eighty, eighty-five percent of your budget, so, so I'm just looking at the savings there and then trying to back in.
Sure. Specifically, when you say it could have been a wash, what are you referencing that could be a wash? What could have been a wash?
Well, it looks like with the federal, I mean, excuse me, with the impact statement that you gave to me, and you had a number of items here, stipends, first-year budget reductions, unemployment estimates, you came down to $687,000, okay? Total decrease, good news for taxpayers. Then below it, you had a little asterisk, those net savings will be offset by reductions in the funding formula, state aid, salary step increases, and healthcare cost increases. So the 687,000 minus the 300,000 minus the 250,000, that still leaves me with about $130,000. And, but now I go back to the plus side here, because Steve just has saved us $200,000 more in healthcare costs, so now 130,000 and 200,000, I'm back to $330,000 on my taxpayer, property taxpayers, they're looking good here. So I'm trying to bridge that gap between 330,000 and the 900,000 you need of more revenue from the property taxpayers. I'm trying to make up that million.
I, I, I see what you're trying to do. The problem is that what you're trying to do is you're trying to start at a place that we were already anticipating rolling into this year. If we changed nothing, if we added no staff, if we reduced no staff, our beginning conversation with the town in December was that we were already walking into a projected deficit and needed a deficit reduction plan. And so when you're talking about the net savings offset by the funding formula and the step increases in healthcare costs, those would have been absorbed by the taxpayer within a property tax transfer amount. Because we were walking in, and we will continue to walk in because we are, as the Providence Journal has coined the phrase, the biggest loser in the funding formula that's not a regional district. So that was known to us. The fact that you're, you're operating off of not a budget document, but you're offering off of a budget disclosure to the community of what the contractual elements are, is I think what's confusing, because the discussion tonight is on the budget. And this one piece of paper that you continue to reference is a fiscal impact statement, it's not the budget. So I think that's what's confusing to the other folks in the room. You certainly may.
Not to me.
No, I'm, I'm just going to wait.
We got a problem here.
Jim, did you finish with your questions?
No, no, but I'm not getting the answers I need.
Alright, I do want to go back to Jonathan because he had his hand up a while ago. Um, Jim was speaking.
Yeah, so I think that there's confusion on that fiscal impact statement, because as I, as I understand it, and this is, I end up voting against a teacher contract in large part because I don't feel that this represents what was negotiated in the contract. And so I think that's where there's confusion, and Mr. O'Neil is bringing out that it does say in there certified staff, and it's wrapped in there, the year one budget reductions of almost, you know, the 1.685 million includes a lot of positions that are not certified staff. So I think there's, it's, it's not clear on multiple levels.
Could we have a response to that?
Certainly.
Thank you.
What I will say to you is that a fiscal impact statement was never required previously when folks entered into collective bargaining agreements. It's a new disclosure to the public because it's not obvious to the public how much common planning time might cost. So years ago, school committees would agree to collective bargaining successor agreements without necessarily highlighting for their communities exactly how much things would cost, like summer school, like common planning time. So they would not disclose a fiscal impact statement to the community before budgeting. I think it was the Auditor General's office who, this is our second contract, so I would assume at least four to five years ago, who said that it's, it's important that after a contract is tentatively agreed to, that someone write down what the financials are, which you see at the top of this fiscal impact statement, and then what the items of the contract are that are not necessarily transparent financially, you're required to make them transparent financially, like common planning time, summer school, after-school programs, summer school tuition, pieces like that. And so that's what the purpose of this is. I, I, I am puzzled as to why that would be confusing, because I would say years ago, it certainly would be confusing because no one enumerated necessarily, or should I say folks weren't required to enumerate how much pieces like this cost. If you had been a part of collective bargaining where there was a reduction in class size, family members will see that as a very positive choice, won't naturally think that there would be a fiscal impact to that sort of a statement. That's the reason that one generates a fiscal impact statement, that's the reason this was generated. This fiscal impact statement is correct. It was loaded onto our website prior to the school committee taking action on the successor agreement. This is a more sophisticated fiscal impact statement than you've seen before because of the timing, and I can't even say how many times I've had to say this out loud, and I don't mind reiterating it if people are still unclear. Typically, you would not know, you wouldn't be in the budget process when you are negotiating. Typically, teacher contracts are negotiated over the summer. That certainly has been the case here as well. And so in August, in July, if you're coming to a tentative agreement, you would merely list the lump sum salary that folks had agreed to, any healthcare offset that folks had agreed to, and any of the tangible items that wouldn't nat, folks in the community wouldn't naturally know how much that costs. You would let them know. And you let them know in advance of the school committee voting on that budget, so that they could stand up and say, "Common planning time, I didn't realize it cost $40,000, I'm unsure if that's valuable to me as a taxpayer." "School committee, I would like you to take that into consideration when you vote for this tentative agreement or not." Because this particular year, the teacher's contract settled on the day, week before we presented budget numbers for review, you are, you are afforded an even greater piece of detail. To me, that's not a negative, that's a positive.
Alright, Scott, I just want to make sure that you know that we have Raisa, Maureen, Scott Miller, and then Jonathan De La Bell. So I'm, I'm following the proper procedure for who's got the speaking order. So hold that thought, please. Raisa?
I'm okay, I think Kristen explained it. I think, just to reiterate, I think a lot of the confusion is coming from the fiscal impact statement, the contract being settled so close to when the budget was presented. So the fiscal impact statement typically would, would be released in July or in August, and because it was released almost, you know, three days before the budget, I think that's where some of the confusion is, is coming about. I hope that helps to clear it up.
But it should be more clarity to be.
Does the town council have any questions with that clarification that the negotiations were settled three days before they finalized their budget? Any questions on that piece? Okay, Raisa, you, done? Maureen?
Well, not to be redundant, but that's pretty much what we wanted to say. However, I do want to defer to Kevin for a minute to explain something, he's been trying to explain something to us.
But he didn't go through the chair, so he must have been notifying you.
Al, I raised my, I just.
Didn't see it, sorry.
Because I whispered it to Scott, I'm fine with that.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to talk about, to me, what the fiscal impact statement is. In the history in Rhode Island, many of the communities would backload contracts or bury things in contracts. So let me give you, for example, we could have negotiated this contract and said, "You know what, we really are tight on money here, let's try to get a couple more zeros, but you know what, for all our top steps teachers, we're going to give you healthcare for life." We might have been able to get, to do that deal, because in possibility, the teachers might have said, "Healthcare for life."
I don't think that would ever get by Steve or Alan.
That one we'll get to in a few minutes, that one we're going to get to in a few minutes.
My point is, other districts have done that because it looks like the cost is not, you can hide the cost. So what the financial impact statement is saying, if you did something like that, what is that going to cost the district? In that case, Stephen, Alan, and John would give it this huge number of saying, "Yeah, you did a couple more percentage points of zero, but you gave away healthcare for life." Another example is the, the current Providence contract, which did two zeros, but in the last year of the contract, they did 6% in one year, 3% in September and 3% in June. So a fiscal impact statement would say, "Okay, you did zero for the first two years, but then 6% in the last year." What is the totality of that? That's all I was going to say.
Maureen, did you have anything to say before I jump to Scott?
I guess the only, the only thing that I would add about the fiscal impact statement, I'm sorry if there's confusion about that. There was a discussion on the part of the school committee about the inclusion of non-certified staff in that, and the school committee voted to include all of the anticipated cuts for transparency, so that we weren't including some anticipated cuts, but rather, everything was open to the community. And I can't imagine that there's anybody at either table that wouldn't be supportive of that kind of transparency.
Any response here at the table? Jim?
No, frankly, that is why I'm bringing this whole thing up, because I do like the transparency. transparency. It was just simply this one line that just brought up certified staff. It's just too bad.
No, I understood.
It didn't say certified staff. This is what I've been talking about all along, and I don't like being talked down to either. And I'm really, really upset about this, the whole discussion at the moment, I can tell you that. How about then just going back to the $1,587 per into the $498,000? I came out with 314 certified folks. So can you tell me where the difference is? Steve gave us 324, and I get 314, if my math is correct there, Alan. Why am I missing 10 people? Or does this go beyond the certified staff, do you think? It also includes everybody else down the line, custodials too. I'm only trying to do that math.
The stipend that you see is only for top step teachers. The rest of the staff only receive their step increases. So the $1,597 or the $539,000 that you see on the fiscal impact statement is only to top step teachers in year one, and that's a stipend paid out in two payments.
How many of those folks are there top step? 10 and above, right, is considered top step? Not seven through nine, but just 10 and above?
10 and above.
So how many folks there? 314? I mean, 314 times the 1,587 is 498,410.
94.
294.
Okay.
I just want to understand here, we're talking about a document, we don't all have, Jim. You have it, Ella's got it, Meg doesn't have it. I don't have it. I don't know how many of these people have it. Do you have it?
I didn't realize.
I mean, are we talking off the budget that you handed us tonight? Are we talking about something else? I mean, I just want to know where we are.
And I also want to keep civility at the table. And Scott, I don't think that you did mean any offense to Jim, did you?
Oh, was it me that talked down to you?
No.
Okay.
Nope, Scott's very fair.
I'm usually clearer about it.
All right. So I'm gonna put the elephant in the room. Jonathan, you did come to the town council meeting on Monday, and this was given to the town council, this fiscal impact statement, and there were many questions that you brought up here at the town council table. And I just want, you know, school committee members to know, that's where this fiscal impact statement has come from. So, and part of our goal tonight is some of the questions that Jonathan asked at the microphone, we're gonna try to get answers to as well. And I have passed some of those questions on prior to this meeting.
Ella, I got that statement a month before Jonathan gave it to us the other night. I've had this thing for six weeks.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
It's in December. I've had it for six or eight weeks.
Thank you. I misspoke. My apologies.
And the reason, listen, I'm very happy with this fiscal impact statement.
It's a public document on the website.
Yeah, I really am happy with this, and I'm glad for transparency, all of that. But I have to listen to a lot of folks out here in our community. And when the contract was changed in the third year, and then you added, you know, another year to it, things changed. And it got all closely compacted, but folks out there said, "Hey, we've gone from a zero to a 2%. And when we finally saw what you had, it came from a zero to a stipend, and then to a 2%." I mean, people have a right to say, "Gee, we're laying off 25, 30, 35 people. Obviously, you've seen, we're saving money on health care costs. Possibly, will we save money on pension costs and not with the increase that we've seen, so on and so forth." But I like this transparency. This made sense because this is what I've been arguing about for years, and UCOA just finally caught up with me after 12 years I've been arguing about this whole case. So I appreciate this. I really do. I'm just trying to get my numbers to all fit here, because Steve's budget, your budget, fiscal impact statement, I'm looking at three different avenues here of trying to come up with a final number.
Scott? And then Jonathan.
I wondered, I was unaware that Jonathan came to the town council meeting and raised questions.
He was here as a citizen.
I don't care in what role he was here. I was unaware of that. I was unaware that that was part of the agenda for this evening's meeting, and frankly, I think it's inappropriate. I don't think that the questions are inappropriate. This is just not the process for dealing with those questions. If this is an issue, I think we ought to plan a meeting where everybody knows what the agenda is, and we can have that conversation. But to come into a meeting where Jonathan has had a bunch of conversations elsewhere and not even to know that that's on the table, I think that's inappropriate.
I think I did, I just, to be fair, I did make a phone call to pose some of the questions that were brought up Monday night to some of the school committee members. So just going, it's Jonathan, and then I'll jump to Meg.
My concerns with this have been very clear, so I don't know if Mr. Miller's feeling that I'm inappropriate, or if this being part of the discussion's inappropriate because of the chair, but I certainly do not feel like this is inappropriate because this is how we arrive at a budget, and it's part of the conversation.
Okay, I think we're, you know, and I'm not gonna make any ruling on this, but I think that what has been stated time and time again here is the fiscal impact statement dealt with negotiations, and here we're talking about the budget. So that's where I see the separation. I'm willing to go a little bit further in the discussion if this fiscal impact comes up again. I can see that there was a difference that with the, in numbers from Steve, and then the numbers from the school department with job funds, the group home aid, I can see, and then that third factor that also came in. So at this time, can we hold off on the impact statement and just go pass, go on to Meg?
I don't actually even have a question. I just wanted to make a comment because, in all fairness to Scott, thank you for your concerns. I appreciate those very, very much. But in all fairness to both Ella and Jonathan, he was here as a concerned citizen, Ella was here running the meeting, and actually, we tabled or put that discussion off till tonight's meeting. So I, as far as you were saying you were unaware, I don't think things went any farther than a couple of questions that he may have had that we decided to table. So I just wanted to make that clarification.
And we actually added it with a motion to the agenda because the dialogue was going back and forth. So I'm gonna jump to Jim next, and then Jonathan.
Yeah, I'm not defending Jonathan here. Jonathan had some various questions and comments the other night. Not once did we discuss the fiscal impact statement. Not one digit, not one decimal point, not one comma, a period was talked about. I'm using this because this is a very important document to help me figure out what's happening with the budget. And since personnel costs, salaries, and benefits are 85% of the budget, you better believe this is important. And since the contract was changed in the third year, people want to know what's going on. So I think I have a right to bring this up. If I don't, then I don't belong here at the table.
We actually.
And I'd be happy to leave.
We actually did move it.
Really? I don't need this.
We actually moved it from Monday to bring it to this discussion, Jim. So Carol?
Honestly, Jim, I think the, this fiscal impact statement does translate into this budget. I mean, she's got on here that the superintendent's budget includes a $1.68 million reduction in staffing. That's on there. She's trying to explain, I think they're trying to explain, how this translates into the actual budget document that they're presenting. And really, isn't that what we're supposed to be most concerned with? What is the bottom line? How much is this increase from last year? What kind of percentage of the property tax transfer has it increased? I mean, you're saying 2%. She says in here it's 1.59%. I mean, so they've made certain concessions, and I'm confused why we're going back and forth on all this. This seems to be much more, you know, in-depth than this, the budget. And that's what we should be talking about. And I think it translates into this.
It certainly does translate in the budget. I'm still below zero. I just can't get to this 1.59% increase, 1.59% increase. I just can't bridge that gap.
1.59?
Yeah, from $200,000 to $300,000 in favor of the taxpayers.
We're losing money from the funding formula and different group, you know, different, I think if you had your budget, you could go back and look at what Steve says on M30. There's quite a bit on that. And I'd like to keep going and hear what is the bottom line. That's what we're not talking about. Sorry.
Jonathan?
Yeah, so I think, I don't think that this fiscal impact statement does add transparency. I don't think it's sophisticated because the figures there, whether it's with the, you know, we're passing the budget right now, there's a figure for next year of nearly $800,000 reduction. So I brought this forward in a public meeting on Monday night. I've brought this forward in school committee public meetings, so I'm not sure where people feel like this is catching them off guard because this has been a concern. I tried to get it resolved at the school committee table, but if you follow the school committee meetings whatsoever, there's a great interest in shutting down my questions and trying to get my concerns answered.
I really would like to.
So I think that's why it has ended up here tonight, and maybe this will be an informative to the rest of the school committee to try and keep things at school committee table. Don't rush things along. Get things resolved, make sure that things are being done properly, because this is not a sophisticated document, in my opinion. And I think it is, I know, that is showing reductions, budget reductions, that are not linked to the contract. All that said, I come here as a school committee member tonight. I voted in support of the budget. We have some very serious reductions. I certainly hope that the town council and the whole entire community will support this budget from any further reductions because I think that there are a lot of, there's a lot of staffing reductions, and I certainly cannot see that it would be appropriate whatsoever to consider anything further. So I come here, I supported the budget. I'm not happy with how this, we arrived at this. I think that it makes things muddy. It does not improve transparency, so I look at this for this year, but also trying to not have a poor precedent set moving forward. But I want to be extremely clear that I support this budget. I have concerns with it, but I certainly hope that my, the elected officials of the town council and the community in general will not even consider cutting the budget any further.
I almost think at this point, let me just reiterate what I think I heard you say. You don't think that this is transparent in a fiscal impact statement that does well because of the year two budget reductions?
Both of them. That 1.685, this is a question I had, those 30 to 35 positions that are being cut, is that a condition of the contract?
I've already heard from one town council member, "I also think that this is well-done fiscal impact statement." So I think before I leave the room, I'm gonna get some consensus on how we all feel, and I'm gonna defer to Maureen.
Well, at this particular time, first of all, Carol, I want to thank you for bringing us back to the bottom line. And hopefully, we can get back there. But right now, I need to yield to Mr. Richart, who will provide some information on what was just discussed.
I'd just like to clarify what the fiscal impact statement represents. When we negotiate a contract, we're required to post that fiscal impact statement so many days before the school committee votes that contract. And we're required to submit this to the AG's office. And part of the requirement is to clearly show the cost of the new contract and how we're gonna pay for it. And it's a two-year contract, so we have to reflect both years in that two-year contract and clearly show how we're paying for that and not putting the district in deficit by negotiating that contract. So what's in this fiscal impact statement demonstrates that clearly?
You're the auditor general.
We're the auditor general.
All right. So can we put this aside for a minute and move on with the budget? Because I know I have some additional questions. Are there any other questions from the town council here at the table?
I just have one.
Carol?
I'm going back to when we first started, but the UCOA spending above the state average. I was just wondering why the clerical is 77% higher. Why is that so high?
We have more clerical than most districts.
And that's a necessary, I mean, do we need that many? I'm just asking. I guess that's your job, but.
Right. So I.
Why would we need more than any other district?
So I'm gonna remind folks that I inherited a lot of these programs, buildings, and staff. And so I can only look at it since I've been here and taking a look every single year at open positions, at the most needed positions that match our district mission and vision. I'm not sure how you got, how we got before to a level of staffing in some of these areas, but we are recommending a reduction in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
Other questions here at the table? Maureen?
I think I would just add, Carol, that certainly in my experience, that type of data wasn't always as visible as it is right now. So being able to see that and then make decisions based on the data makes a huge difference for us.
That's true.
One of the questions that I had was the Family Community Engagement Program, which deals with some of our minority population, lower socioeconomic, maybe some kids on some individual education plans. And I know that, I was told last year when the Title I funds were cut, that $13,000 was cut out of that budget last year, and it was actually a staff person where this reflects some of our most neediest population, that's not getting some of the gaps closed. And I was wondering, if Title I funds are cut again this year, is that an area that will be lessened, the Family Community Engagement Program?
There are no plans currently to drop. The Family and Community Engagement for everyone else's benefit is not a staffing position. We contract through a vendor, and we pay into the vendor, and the vendor provides the services, although they are familiar folks to us because they have been serving the community for a very long time. There are no anticipated cuts to that program. We have not received from the Rhode Island Department of Education our consolidated resource grant numbers, although we know that at a federal level, we are expecting decreases in some of the federal accounts. But we know that the Title I disadvantaged funds are based on free and reduced lunch counts, and we have not seen a significant reduction in that area. I would say at this time, certainly not. It's not something that's been discussed at all. If somehow we're presented in May with numbers that are significantly different than what we had anticipated, then that'll be a conversation that we'll have at the district level regarding what the priorities are. But at this time, no. It's not something that we're thinking of. It's not something that we're talking about.
And then my last question's in reference to that because that is a need in the school district with this population. If there's any money saved in attrition, is there, has there been any discussion with possibly adding that $13,000 back to increase the staff so that we can better address the needs of the children?
That has not been a discussion either. Certainly, this is the Assistant Superintendent and Special Education Director's first work with the Consolidated Resource Grant, so I anticipate being a greater part of that formulation than I have been in years past where seasoned folks have been in that job. It could be a topic of discussion, but that's not something that we have talked about at this point. But I appreciate your insight into that.
Thank you. I know that the high school librarian was looked at in prior years, and my understanding that that's not one of the positions that's being looked at. I think that you can safely say that, or no?
I have to be honest, I am not safely discussing any individual positions at this point. It's certainly not a discussion that's been had at the school committee table. Certainly, we've not highlighted particular areas, but I don't think it would be fair from my perspective to the other groups if we sort of make a check mark in saying, "These groups are safe and these aren't." We take the whole district into consideration.
And I was just looking at information that was shared with me that pink slips, no pink. no pink slip, that type of thing, so.
Right. Certainly-
I thought you could be safe in saying that.
One could, one could put the puzzle together. We've, we have, we have taken great care in our community to not disclose layoff list names in public. That is done in almost every community. And there's been great consideration here for staff who have families, who may read their names in the newspaper. And we, we all know that the layoff list is larger because of the March 1 deadline, which I know you support a change in that timeframe. We're appreciative of that support. Clearly, as we get closer to May and June, and folks are retiring, or going on leave, or changing their employment status, we can have a better understanding of the pink slips that will in fact stay, remain. But yes, when folks received a pink slip, I absolutely am certain that they will talk to one another and share out their, either their concern or their celebration that they weren't duly noticed. I think that there's a misconception that there is also displacement procedures. So although folks will be employed, in some cases, they might be displaced out of, out of their position. That's something that happens every year.
All right. And I just want to clarify, it wasn't people, I wasn't referring to people that received pink slips, the people that did not-
Right.
...receive pink slips and said, rah rah, I didn't get a pink slip. So I don't want you to think that I was trying for you to say-
Oh, no, no.
Who was, who, names of people who are positions that received pink slips?
No, no, I didn't think that.
It was people that called me and said, first year, I didn't get a pink slip. So.
And that's, that is cause for celebration, absolutely.
The other thing that I had made a phone call prior, and it, I guess you could tie it into the budget, but the curriculum material library at University of Rhode Island had requested any books, a copy of a teacher's edition, a student edition, because they do the training for our teachers, and they would really like to work with the materials that are used in South Kingston. So I didn't know if there have been any books purchased, because they have not received anything.
So I, when you called, I passed that information along. I'm trying to remember whether it was to Mary Kelly or Pauline Leacy, but it was to that office, because they would be working with any textbook purchases. I will say that my understanding is when we had a student copy and a teacher copy, we're going to make those available. But if you're speaking about new textbook purchases, in some cases, when we do make a textbook purchase, I would have to get that information to the, to the high school office. We're not textbook-based at the elementary level. And some, in some cases, we're going to open ed resources instead of being in a, in a textbook environment. But I will be sure to reiterate that to Pauline Leacy and to Bob McCarthy in the morning.
And maybe the answer is that there haven't been any textbooks, you know, that have been purchased, so.
I, I thought though also that you were requesting that if we had, let's say, we're using an Algebra I textbook, that that, that be made available.
That, that would be great, because that will be some of the materials that they'll use to train the teachers of tomorrow, which will be a win-win situation for University of Rhode Island as well as the school district.
Absolutely. I'll be sure to, to give them a, another reminder.
All right. And then just a couple of things. I didn't know if there was any follow-up with the park assessment and, you know, funding the technology that will be needed for that since our last discussion. Is there any updates with that information?
John and I had participated in a, a meeting at the Rhode Island Department of Education led by the commissioner and Cindy Brown to talk specifically about the technology bond money. So I'm, I, I do appreciate, and I'm sure the children of the community appreciate, both the school committee and the town council standing alongside our legislators to ask for the amount that was represented to South Kingston. We have been told about the, the process, and it's a very lengthy process. The Rhode Island Department of Education acquired some expert help in this area. They put out a vendor list. We're now making application for the vendors to come to our district and do an audit that would be another layer on the audit that was done internally by our folks and sent to RIDE. So they want to get a sense of what the level of wireless is in every building, what the level of hardware is in every building, the switches, et cetera. And then they will make a determination as to how much we're entitled to. I, I would say that the pressure is, has been firmly applied, and the expectation is that we would like at least minimally what our legislators felt they were voting for, for our community. And I believe that they received that message. I'm, I'm uncertain as to how it will turn out in the end, but I think that you all have been very, very supportive, and we appreciate that.
And we are meeting with the legislators on Monday, March 25th. Hopefully, they'll make it, and we will reinforce that again that night.
Thank you so much.
The, the only other comment that I have is sign language, and I'll be honest with you, this was from one of your staff, one of my neighbors, Mrs. Beck. She had had a conversation today with somebody that was offering some sign language in the district, but has left. And I think the position was posted, and we didn't get anybody. But is that something that could be offered in place of a foreign language? And would that be something that's accepted at the college/university? And the second part of that question is, do we have children in the district that rely on sign language as a communication? Because if there, there are children that need that, is that something that could be offered as a class in place of the foreign language, and then maybe use it as a twofold prong to communicate with some children that may have communication disorders?
I would say clearly that we do have students in the district who have communication needs. We have students who have hearing needs. But whether they rely on sign language, I am not certain that I can say that they rely on sign language. We certainly have lots of auditory devices in, in, in different classrooms. But I will certainly bring that back and ask, I don't know if sign language can be offered in place of world language. Happy to pose that question to Kirsten Stahl, who's our world language department chair. When you're talking about, we had someone certified in sign language, and that they, they're not there any longer, and they're, they're, we tried to replace them. John and I are looking at each other and not, not recalling that. So we're wondering if it's a vendor. We're wondering if it was a contractual service provider. And we can certainly get more clarity from the special education director. But thank you for, for bringing that up. We will look into it.
I just thought that, wow, what a great idea. If it, if we could offer that, and we could use that with communication, if there was a need with children in the district, I thought that was a brilliant idea. But-
We're always looking for brilliant ideas.
Maureen, did you have a question?
I was.
Other questions here at the table?
I just want to clarify that I think that the UCOA data that the state, and I've said this in school committee meetings, it is a wonderful program that the state has put together. You know, it's something that really seems long overdue. I guess this is the data that we're using. I mean, it's, it's good to have it. It's a little old, so it'll be interesting to see how that, the data plays out over the next year or two. And, you know, I think at the school committee table, I, I think we've done a good job using what's available to us. But, you know, I'm also hope that we'll be able to maybe hone in on it a little more, you know, in future process. And just to the point of the consensus around the fiscal impact statement, I know you're trying to get to the bottom line. I don't want to reopen it. But consensus is well and good. We did have another topic at the school committee where there was consensus on an issue, which turned out that the person who was not part of the consensus, you know, was, was on to something. So consensus is good, but it doesn't always answer everything. So I just want to, you know, I just want to point that out as I'm being told that I'm inappropriate in how I'm bringing something up. So I did, thank you.
You know, I'm really hoping that issues at the school committee table can get resolved, and that the town, it really is out of the town council jurisdiction. And I'm hoping that collaborative working relationship on behalf of this town, you know, continues, and it doesn't really travel over onto the town council's table. Because I don't really think that it, that is our place. I don't know how the town council members feel. Maybe they think that it is our place, but. The last question that I have is, the building analysis, has there been further discussion at the school committee table? And will that take place in the, in what, what school year? And I am very worried about those heating systems at West Kingston Elementary School and Mattoonik Elementary School.
So I'm going to start, and then I'm going to hand off to John. Last evening, as a part of the consent agenda, the school committee approved the bid process for the facilities audit that was brought up by Mr. Miller. And with a minor adjustment-
...that it may also affect certainly timely given that the tragedy is in effect, and certainly our safety prices have been after the years, and certainly the number of, after that tragedy. We're looking at our partnership with, with our police force in town and our, and our fire chiefs in town, and homeland security representatives, or community members who are giving up their time to go through and be applauded. So this is really an extra step to ensure safety. It was spoken about in the briefcase last evening. And I'm going to give the microphone to Mr. Richart, who didn't answer any detailed questions.
We have progressed now to develop an RFP facility. That's one of the things that we're looking at, Monday, both in that and what we're looking to do. If there's what is motion immediately after we collect, if that, if that, separately, if we can stop facilities that don't have children, if children are pressed to buildings that have children, ask the school leaders not to wind out. And we're looking for results that will be, they not, and will be considered in the capital budget.
Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, this is a lead-in to what I've suggested a couple of times in terms of the budget. On page 29 on the budget message, I indicated that at this point, the unassigned fund balance for the school fund is about $1.9 million. And that's as of June 30 of 2012, the last audit. We're anticipating using the school estimate or, or Allen's estimate that will finish as of June 30 of '13, somewhere in there of either 1.75 or 2.1 million. We can continue to use the 25% value as far as the 535 that's going into future year budgets as, as a base revenue. But what I'd like to look at is that if we continue to see the surplus positions of the school, and the fund balance continues to build, that what we would like to do is to look at the next bond, which is due in '14, '15, and reduce the size of the bond, and take a portion of what would be an undesigned fund balance, or unassigned fund balance, to pay down that cost. Bonding, really, you take the amount of the bond and you double it when you get done with the 20 years that you're paying. If we have the availability of dollars, and we were anticipating about a million dollars in that bond in '14, '15, if we have an ability to take a portion from that and be able to pay down what the bond amount would be, it's something I think would be in the school department's business. Until we see what the results of the building analysis is, and see what the true costs are, I'm not sure where that's going to go. We may have to look at some immediate costs, that it will be important to have that fund balance available as a, as a safeguard if we were in need. I think the most important thing that we've got to also look at is that we've got to look at getting this study done so that we can get before the State Department of Education to be able to get the eligibility for that, for the housing aid. Because that's, that's got to be done, or we don't get the, the reimbursement dollars on both whatever interest and principal there is. So I think it's important for us, you know, we've talked at the staff levels to get that project out. We'll fund it through this year's budget, because we are anticipating surf, a surplus position for June 30 of '13. But what I want to look at is that, you know, there were other areas that I think we could look at within the overall school budget for the '13, '14 year, that we're not recommending reductions on. And we feel that if those dollars are available, that can pay down, it will serve the public better by not having to pay interest on those dollars, yet we'll ensure that we have a proper physical plant in place for them. Last comment, please, let's make sure that we're not going to deal with a facilities audit that looks at leaking faucets and toilets. We want to look at the buildings, the HVAC, the envelope of the buildings. But that which is O and M needs to be a part of what has always been a, a component of the operations budget. I just want to put that on the record, because I, I think it's important for us as a community to look at, how do we, how do we keep our debt levels down? How do we prevent us paying unnecessary interest expenses? How do we make sure that we get the state reimbursement on the housing aid, and make sure that the fiscal plan's in its proper condition? So hopefully, you'll share, share my opinion on this as we, as we move forward, if those dollars are available. I think one of the more important things is that the school department has really been in partnership with the town, where there hasn't been a lot of year-end spending. And there's trust for us to be able to say, well, it's not going to be a case where those dollars are going to be spent, even though they could be. And we recognize that you can. We also recognize that, that it could, it could take away from the relationship that we currently have. So hopefully, as we move forward with the, the budget proposal, we can build on that fund balance and be able to take a portion, if not all, that's necessary to be able to deal with first-line responsibilities as far as building improvements, without having to impose debt on the community.
Alan?
Yeah. And one bonus with that would be that we would get the housing aid in the following year, which would be 35%. But as Steve said, it, it has to be a permanent improvement. If it's on the O and M, they don't give you anything.
Any other questions, comments?
Alan, remind me-
Make sure that all of the questions here at both tables are answered before we go to the public. Maureen?
Well, I just hopefully want to sum up some of the thinking that contributes to our bottom line. So in terms of, in terms of our district priorities, that's how we thought about the budget. And really, we thought about three, three questions. How do we ensure all students have access to the regular education curriculum? We asked, how do we increase instructional rigor and best practice instruction? And we asked, how do we ensure that all students are propelling forward? And as the superintendent said in her presentation, we have not cut any programs.
Good point. Does the town council have all of their questions answered? Carol, you good?
I'm good.
Meg?
I'm fine.
Jim?
Thank you.
Do you have any more questions? You good?
This is supposed to be a budget hearing, and I'm still reeling from the fact that I've got a million seven in expenditure reductions, and yet we're asking our taxpayers for $900,000 more. And this was a budget, and I don't know how to get from one side to the other. None of that was discussed tonight.
Is there any more information, maybe from Steve, or Alan, or Kristin, or John?
Steve, it's not 900, is it? It's 700 and something, isn't it? That's the difference?
The increase for the taxpayers is 767,283, and 1.59% is the, the number. The overall expenditure statement is up $375,000 over what was budgeted in the current year. So it's a $375,000 increase on the base year. When you look at the fact that you've got an increase of 767,000 on the tax appropriation- When you look at the fact that you've got an increase of 767,000 on the tax appropriation, you've got to also look at the fact that you've got a reduction, almost $400,000 in state aid. So a goodly portion of the 767 is coming from the reductions that are associated with either the loss on the group home or the loss on the, the education aid formula, because we've gone from 8.5 to 8.1. So it's a $400,000 change. So you're now down to saying that the taxpayer's picking up an additional 367,000 net of what the loss on the state aid. You're also seeing a reduction in the, the value of $50,000 on the Medicare, Medicaid reimbursement. So that also plays into it and gets you down to less dollars. I think when you're dealing with the reductions that were proposed, I can't isolate all 1.685 million dollars any more than anyone else can. I understand it's within the FTEs. I understand that there's also other increases. Because when you look, some of the things we haven't talked about are the things that are increasing that are sizable within that budget, such as the cost of outside tuitions, the cost of transportation. There are a number of, of those increases on the school committee's submitted budget. If you go to, I guess the third page, and Kristin, you, you made this available to the [inaudible]. You're, you're, you're taking just the transportation cost itself. We were at 3,558, it's at 3,665. So you've got a $100,000 increase to stand still. Because that's what the contract, it was a multi-year contract that was there. When you look at the, the cost of, of special education, it was budgeted at 1,231, it's up to 1,268. The charter schools, Alan?
Yeah, the overall, Steve, the three tuitions are going up around 121,000. The transportation, as you mentioned, up around 107,000. You've got retirement going up. This is on the certified, 140,000. That's just based on the increase as far as the, the actuarial. On the non-certified, it's going up around 31,000. Workers' comp, based on some bad experience, is projected to go up 65,000. And then the rest of it is really in healthcare, where there's a trend increase for next year. And that's based on what Blue Cross has provided us, that has been put into the formula, and that's around 200,000, that that's going to increase healthcare costs. There's actually a decrease in healthcare because of the positions that are being reduced, the 30 positions that are being reduced. But built into that is about 200,000 for the trend increase.
So in a lot of ways, I think what you have to do is to take all of the goods and all of the bads in a single column and see where you end up. And where you end up is a $375,000 net expenditure increase. And where you were, end up because of the loss in aid is a $767,000 tax increase. So I'm not sure that answers Jim's, Jim's question, but I think that it's those, the devil is in the detail within those line items, within the purchase services and contract Are all of the numbers going to be 100% correct? Could you fine tune the number of students that you have? Could you fine tune the number that are in charter schools? Could you fine tune that, the number of teachers? Those that are getting the 1,587? Yeah, those numbers could be refined, but is the difference going to be a material dollar amount for the program? And I, I think you have to look at the detail level to see where those increases are, to see why you end up with a net increase of the 375,000.
Thank you for that, for the clarification and added detail. Do you have another question, Jim?
This is what I had, this is what I wanted to talk about tonight, how we get from the million seven to the 967. 967 came down to 767, because he found $200,000 more. We have unemployment, we've got all these things. I had everything down here.
So that helped?
That's talking budget. That's what a budget is. That's what you're talking about.
So what Steve just explained?
He said everything what I've said earlier. The only thing I don't like doing is paying for this lack of, what is it, the federal jobs fund, the 427,000. Wasn't that a given last year that that was going to expire?
They've incorporated the federal money into the state aid, Jim. What, what you're seeing is that you're, you're losing the $400,000, of which 300's in the education aid formula, 60 of it's in your, in your group home. And then, so, I mean, that's, that's where you're losing the money. The state has incorporated what was 427,000 in the overall aid. Our problem is that we're certainly not going to see a, a large portion of it because of the formula distribution.
Any other questions, comments, before I open it to the public? Okay, this is a public work session, and this is the time for the audience to come to the microphone and make any comments in reference to the work session. So if there's a comment, if you could come to the microphone and state your name, please.
Yep. Keith Voorheven. I'd like to voice my support for this budget. I appreciate the clarification that's taken place in this conversation. And, and I'm, I'd like to point something out that, that concerns me. I attended last night's school committee meeting where there was a conversation about this conversation. And it was pointed out that perhaps we should identify the specific positions that were reflected in the financial impact statement. At that time, the school committee, in a majority, agreed that that was a rather curious question and one that the town council hadn't pursued in the past. And it was agreed upon that perhaps that wasn't our best course of action. And then low and behold, tonight, Jim asked that very question. And then as the conversation takes place, it turns out that Mr. Daley LaBelle was here on Monday with the impact statement, and yet at last night's school committee meeting, never mentioned that he had come before the town council and brought this to your attention. And I think at best, you could refer to that as a breach of etiquette. And I think it was discourteous to not identify that you had, Mr. Daley LaBelle, had already spoken to you. And I think at worst, you could, in a suspicious way, identify that he set the school committee up like a bowling pin.
I don't think we should comment on that comment, Keith. Other comments from the public? Eileen?
My name is Eileen Riley, and I just have a quick question. With, in the high school, the enrollment decline, is that, does that cover dropouts and people who simply fail, go all the way through and don't complete whatever necessities they are, is that?
Yes.
That's included? And do you happen to have the breakdown of how much of a, of a rate that is compared to?
If you can just wait one minute, I, I actually do. It's something that we presented earlier.
And if you could just refer to the document, Eileen, that you're...
I'm just looking at the, the little handout. The high school sections, 250,000 from student enrollment decline and section elimination. And I just wondered...
Is there a handout here at the table?
Yes.
Did you reference a page number?
Four.
I think it's...
Hold the slide.
I think, is, is it this? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm thinking, I'm controlling that. So is it the, is it the page that's labeled "staff reduction recommendations"?
Yes.
So yes, high school dropout rate does factor into that. And youngsters that are going into private schools or charter schools and selecting them instead of our public school has a, has a contribution to that. So the enrollment data, and I always preface when I give enrollment data, so that we try to use the October snapshot that's available to the public on the Rhode Island Department of Education website, so that we don't have different numbers floating around. If I took enrollment today versus October, there would be a slight discrepancy. But in, in an earlier presentation to the town council, we had shown that in school year 2008, 2009, we had 300, 3,591 students in the school department. And in 2012, '13, 3,391, so a reduction of approximately 200 students in four years.
Thank you.
While you're on that topic, just so that is clear, now that Eileen has brought that, and by the way, I just want to wish Eileen a happy birthday today. On her birthday, she comes to a work session for town council and school committee. So the high school dropout rate, could you just explain to the public on how that is factored?
So it would be our overall goal to make certain that every youngster who was eligible to attend high school in South Kingston chose us as their, as their choice. And we're actually in the accountability subcommittee meeting this morning, talking about displaying some of our wonderful data in, in a way to market ourselves as a terrific choice. For dropouts, what happens is the Rhode Island Department of Education actually calculates dropouts as the cohort that enters ninth grade four years later, crossing the stage and receiving their diploma in June. And so that, that is a little bit of a disconnect, because some of the information that comes out of the proficiency-based graduation requirements is very thoughtful, surrounding the fact that some students are not prepared to enter that four-year aggressive college preparatory track and may need five years to actually really leave us with the knowledge and skills that they need to be successful in, in college and career. And so if a youngster stays for that fifth year, they're considered a dropout. If a youngster moves to another community after entering ninth grade, they're considered a dropout. If a youngster decides that they would like to take their GED and they are 18 years of age, they're considered a dropout. And so for, we've worked real hard, and I think that you have been very supportive of our intentions to make certain that youngsters have a lot of different pathways. We're offering them right now a Saturday pilot program, and in the summer, a summer school program that was a benefit of our collective bargaining agreement efforts with, with our teachers. We've also, through that same contract, offered some after-school support programs for students. There were some really nice educative, supportive, educative pieces to that contract. And it's our hope that the dropout rate will certainly diminish.
I just want to add a piece, too. If a student at the high school also attends the University of Rhode Island in their fourth year, they're also considered a dropout?
I'm not sure about that. You, you concurrent, concurrent enrollment?
If they, in their senior year, they attend the university?
Right, dual enrollment. I would have to check on that. My understanding is that they would receive a high school diploma from our community and college credits if they're duly enrolled. But you, you could be right, and I, I might be misunderstanding.
As long as, as long as they receive our high school diploma at the end of that year, they're not considered a dropout.
I think that's a wonderful proposal. I would say I don't think it is, but I think that it is considered a dropout. It would be perfectly...
Hold me in the data. Hold me in the data. I think that it is, but I could be wrong.
Aren't there several seniors that used to go to CCRI for their senior year? I don't know, does that still happen?
We still have that dual enrollment option. I, I have to be honest with you, not as many folks take advantage of it as I would have thought. But we do have that as a pathway.
Other comments from interested citizens?
Hi, Roland Benjamin. I have three parts that I'd like to ask or, or talk about. First thing is, just on, on my overview of this, I think there's, maybe possibly an overstatement in the wages and benefits lines. I see, and I think this is really at root of, of the confusion, which get kind of unnecessarily It's discussed as there, there being reductions, and yet these line items are going up by 600,000, if you take the wages and benefits, from actual spend to next year's proposed spend. In essence, we're paying more dollars out to fewer full-time equivalents. So that, that really is the, the short of it. That's the answer, I think. And I didn't, I didn't quite hear it, I just heard a lot of, lot of, lot of talk. But specifically on that, why I think it may be overstated, and again, resulting in a higher tax rate, is, you know, we talk about 30 full-time equivalents being reduced, and at least, I think, 17 of them were noted to be in, in the certified area, so teachers, right? And we know that, that the cost of a Step 10 teacher with fully, fully loaded benefits is in excess of, of about $100,000 or so. The 17 teacher piece of that alone is, comes to 1.7 million, using that back of the envelopes stretch. So there's, and we're talking about 30 positions, there's 13 more positions that don't even show up as a, as a, as a cost reduction. So I, I don't necessarily think I, an answer tonight is, is really worthwhile. I, I personally would like to see more detail. Whether you need to provide that to me or not is, is at your discretion. You're the elected officials, and it would be a question that I would ask. One question I did have that, that is also, I think, appropriate, is, are municipalities exempt from the Employer Requirements of Affordable Care Act as they get implemented in 2014? Do you know?
No.
You're not exempt, right? Once we hit calendar year 2014, at that point, and if, I, I believe the regulations state that if any employee of, of, of the organization is eligible for federal subsidy to buy through an exchange or buy through some, some federally subsidized program, we'd be subject to a $2,000 a head penalty above 30, for every employee over 30. Is that, is that something we're anticipating? Because the, the eligibility for subsidy is, is fairly low, especially if we have part-time benefit.
I'm not familiar with the limits of that subsidy, but, you know, certainly something that we would look into. And if it was required, then it would come out of the, the healthcare fund as far as that, that payment is concerned.
Okay. And I, on a longer-term basis, it is, as we've talked before, I, I'm also an employer, I, I have 100 employees working for me. We're, we're looking at that particular thing and saying, okay, 2014, it's probably still a benefit that we provide. 2015, it, it may be. But we definitely see a horizon where health benefit, from the employer's standpoint, is just not a benefit anymore. And, and it's just easier to let that, let the, let the exchanges take over. I, I think at this point, has there been any discussions with, with the workforce on that? Even just informational? Because there are things now that, that I'd like for my employees to be doing to prepare for that potential inevitability, if you can use those two words together. So that's, that's all I got.
Yeah.
Thanks, Roland.
Kristin?
Getting what's on and what's off. So I think that I'm going to attempt to answer a little bit of question number one, which is, it wouldn't be, it likely wouldn't be top-step teachers that would be reduced, because within our personnel assignment process, certainly the folks that have been more largely noticed in terms of the March 1 notification date would be lower-step employees. And so you're, you, when you said that we are actually more, sending more dollars out to fewer people, that, that certainly could be true in any teacher collective bargaining group. That, that could be a fair statement to say, because when you're reducing, it would be the lower step. That could be a fair statement to say, because when you're reducing, it would be the lower-step teachers that would likely be reduced.
Thanks for clarifying that. I was thinking the same thing. Other comments? Carol?
I'm just going to try and see if I understand this. I mean, the 1.6, the reduction amount, 1.7 million that you're going to reduce by, I mean, it's possibly going to be 30 layoffs. It could be some retirees, could be in that number. It's going to have something to do with student enrollment at the elementary school, whether you can cut a classroom teacher or however that goes. And course selection at the high school will have something to do with it. So I mean, these are all unanswered questions that I don't know, you know, I'm listening to you, Roland, and I'm listening to Jim, and I can understand how they can't exactly, precisely answer these questions right now, and who's going to go from where. And I think they need the time. And that is subject to student enrollment at the elementary school. It's also subject to curriculum, the students, whatever curriculum courses that they choose, so they can decide where this is going to happen. And then, of course, it goes, like you said, about seniority, and it's usually not going to be the higher-step teacher, because those are the most recognized teachers. Those teachers have the, you know, they've been around a long time, they have the experience. I mean, not that that couldn't happen, but, you know, generally. I mean, that's my understanding from what I've heard tonight. And if I'm wrong, please tell me.
No, I think you are right in what you're saying. And I think that your earlier comment, I believe it was you, reiterated by Maureen, is that the larger context is that we are going to be held responsible for finding 1.685 reductions in staffing. And we're not anticipating cutting programs, closing schools, doing any of the other efforts that could certainly put the budget even. That's not what we're asking. That's not what the plan is here. And so to specifically say that it's Jim Jones who might be affected at the very end would be impossible in any given year. There is a very complicated process to arrive at Jim Jones. Typically, Jim Jones is a lower experienced teacher and a lower salaried teacher. And that will be the case in every group. And so although there might be a reduction, like I had said before, in one area, when a retiree leaves, it doesn't mean we haven't taken that reduction, because you're requiring us to take that reduction. We need to reduce 1.685 in salaries. It means that person that was furloughed may have a chance at employment in Jim Jones' job. So the retirees don't impact that 1.6. It impacts the furloughed person who could be reinstated because a retiree has given their notice early. But yes, big idea. The cuts that are needed are coming out of staffing. We know that we're going to, we based our decisions on UCOA data five years ago, not available to you, and you have it right.
Well, I think that's helpful, the UCOA data. I think that's very helpful.
Last-minute questions from either table before we adjourn, as well as the public? Okay. I'm going to state, meeting adjourned at 9:21. Thank you. Just want to thank all of the staff, Kristen, John, all of the school committee, town council, Alan, Steve, town staff. Thank you.